The work session topic for today is the Opportunity Eugene Task Force update and policy framework. Before I turn it over to the city manager, I wanted to say again my appreciation to all the folks in the community who've been working on this topic, both as part of the mayor's task force and also on their own volition in many places, so agencies and individuals. And I thank everybody for their concern and their hard work. And I guess the comment that I would make is, and I think Susan Van sent us an email this morning and made a good point, and her point was that we have a lot of really good responses over time dealing with our homeless issue that we can be proud of as a community. But right now, we are experiencing a loss of a lot of those services and a growing need. And the pressure that puts on our community is high in terms of livability and the economy and the cost of public safety and healthcare and a whole lot of other things. So it's my hope that as we move into this discussion and get an update on what's happening and talk about how we're going to move forward, that whether you're a person who cares about the livability or the economic well-being of our community, public safety of our community, or the human rights of people in our community, that you will find this a topic that you should want to be engaged in, interested in, and trying to find a way for us to move, take some positive steps forward as a community. So with that, I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mary. Knowing we have a lot to do on today's agenda, I'll turn it over to Michael Wist, who has been taking the lead for us out of our community development division within PDD.
And thank you, Mayor and Council. The last time we met, staff led an informational work session related to the Opportunity Eugene Task Force, its proceedings and final recommendations. As an informational work session, council did not provide direction related to the recommendations of the task force. Today, we bring these items back to you along with the recommendations to develop a policy framework related to homelessness issues. Understanding that addressing homelessness requires a sustained effort, developing a policy framework will help staff and council in considering future efforts as well as the recommendations of the Opportunity Eugene Task Force. To begin our work session today, I'll start by giving a brief update of issues related to homelessness in our community since our last meeting, followed by a review of the recommendations from the Opportunity Eugene Task Force and a discussion of developing a homelessness policy framework. In the time since our last meeting, we've had a number of developments related to homelessness, related to sheltering and day services in Eugene. In April, council approved just over 189,000 in federal CBG funding for the expansion of St. Vincent de Paul's Lint Home Service Station Day Center. Following the Monroe Street Station closure, staff have worked to develop partnerships with the Community Alliance for Lane County and Reality Kitchen to serve as hosts for the rest facilities that were located at Monroe Street Station. And if you haven't heard, there's been a number of proposals related to developing a camp for homeless people that's from the community.
Oh?
Thanks for making the joke, Mary.
One out of eight, that's nine, that's not bad.
Related to healthcare, mental health, and addiction recovery services, again in April, council approved just over 189,000 in federal CBG funding, the same as St. Vincent de Paul, for Whitebird's Christmas Addiction Recovery Program. The Eugene Mission and Whitebird, following the task force, have joined forces to provide medical and case management services at the Mission twice a week. The Buckley House Sobering Station has yet to secure funding for a current fiscal year. It has been given a 90-day contract extension. This provides crucial sobering services to our community. Work is being done to build a partnership with local healthcare providers to assist in securing funding, but that issue remains to be addressed. Related to human rights, following the Opportunity Eugene Task Force, the Human Rights Commission's homelessness work group has been pursuing ways to advance recommendations of the task force within the parameters of the Human Rights Commission's current work funding. They also hosted Eric Tars of the National Law Center on Homelessness and Poverty, who visited Eugene and has noted the Opportunity Eugene Task Force as a best practice for engaging the community around homelessness issues. He has also offered pro bono legal assistance from the law center related to the homelessness issues should the city need necessary. Just a brief reminder, Opportunity Eugene was a community task force established in response to occupied home encampment and issues surrounding homelessness. The task force launched with 58 members, meeting six times over the course of 90 days. The attendance did begin to shrink over this time. The average meeting hosting roughly 30 to 35 members, but the task force worked to develop six recommendations to council, which we call. These will be the six that I will walk through one by one. One was to create and support day use community centers. The task force identified a critical need for more day centers and for increased capacity of existing day centers. Improve traditional and non-traditional healthcare access. It acknowledged that the combination of mental health issues, substance abuse, chronic homelessness, and physical illness affected a disproportionate number of homeless individuals. Number three is continue and expand existing services to the homeless, I'm sorry. Understanding there is a strong social service network within the city of Eugene and Lane County, the task force is careful to suggest that any new initiatives do not result in diverting funding and support from existing homeless and loan-to-con service providers. Next one was to improve laws and ordinances that criminalize and block homeless individuals. Many city ordinances, codes, and policies have the unintended effect of criminalizing life-sustaining activities. In addition, they may serve to make it more difficult for people to access more permanent housing and shelter. Another recommendation was to create a commission to continue to explore homelessness solutions. To strengthen the voice of these recommendations and ensure continued innovation is needed, it is important for an ongoing voice to champion the topic and keep it in the forefront of policy issues. This body should work to create community engagement surrounding homelessness issues And the last one was identify and establish potential sites. Direct city staff to work with community members to identify potential sites in order to establish a safe and secure place to be opened by October 1st of 2012, independently financed with oversight by a not-for-profit organization or agency. Before we discuss these recommendations, I would like to discuss the next part of our presentation, related to the development of a policy framework for homelessness. Issues related to homelessness require sustained effort as we continue to see needs grow and change. Developing a policy framework for homelessness provides a consistent set of criteria by which staff and council are able to consider policy and proposed actions and measure outcomes. The framework we would like to present was drafted using information from past efforts in Eugene, including Opportunity Eugene, the Blue Ribbon Committee on Homelessness, and the Community Analysis and Recommendations on Reducing Homelessness and the Corporation of Support of Housing. Our first recommendation of criteria would be to, new actions should transition people away from homelessness. Second would be to create and promote health, safety, and security throughout the community. Utilize partnerships to share resources with stakeholders. Promote neighborhood livability. Promote sustainability. Have measurable outcomes. And new programs to be approached as pilot programs. For a little bit more detail on each of these, it was agreed that actions should work to assist individuals and families in permanently breaking the cycle of homelessness, therefore transitioning people away from homelessness. To create and promote community health and safety and security, actions should promote these principles both for the unhoused and housed residents of the city of Eugene. To utilize partnerships and share resources with stakeholders, the need to leverage city resources by including community stakeholders and imaginative financing is also added. Promote neighborhood livability. These actions should be built on efforts to garner community support, be accessible to its beneficiaries, and balance issues related to appropriate seating. Actions should promote sustainability, which includes the city's triple bottom line framework, which promotes environmental equity and fiscal sustainability. Should produce measurable outcomes. These actions should define goals and be able to report on progress made toward reaching these goals. And finally, should be able to pilot new programs. New projects should begin as pilots in their initial phases with a possibility for growth as success and demands demonstrated. Following the discussion of the task force recommendations as well as the policy framework, staff laid out a few council options as you'll find in your AIS. One is to direct the city manager to schedule a work session following council break to finalize the policy framework and evaluate the recommendations of Opportunity Eugene Task Force based on this framework, which we just submitted. Number two would be direct the city manager to solicit options to implement recommendation number one for a safe and secure site of the task force. You can evaluate them consistent with the policy framework as revised by the council discussion and bring this work to a work session. Number three, we direct the city manager to pursue implementation of any or all of the Opportunity Eugene Task Force recommendations without an additional policy framework. And the AIS staff did recommend an option number one. With this, I'd like to open it up to council discussion.
Can you do that? I'll just comment on one thing in one of your framework. The first one, being transitioning people away from homelessness, which I agree with, but I think our experience is, yes, we should always be working on helping people be homed and housed, but there will always be people who need shelter at the same time. So I would really not like to not recognize that we still will have to be sure we have enough of a shelter system for folks who cannot be transitioned quickly. Just wanted to add that. Discussion, questions? Yes?
Well, I want to thank everybody in the audience for being here. I know this is an important subject to a segment of our population where I think it should be an important subject to all our population. Since the city manager has put forward three recommendations, I'm not comfortable with the one, John, that you put forward. It doesn't give enough meat on the bones, as far as I'm concerned. There's no discussion about, in any of this really, in the recommendations. In my opinion, I don't see anything regarding some kind of a camp or a place for people to be. And I agree with the mayor's comment about that there will always be people who are not going to want to transition into that, into whatever we have to offer them. And that's, they're right. And I think that, you know, we need to be looking at policies that change the language of making it criminal to be a homeless person, because that's really what I feel like at times, is that they're penalized for not, for whatever reason they're out there, you know, that it's not a sin and it shouldn't be against the law. And so I'm hoping that somebody puts some language forward about how we can make that happen sooner, because I don't think, I mean, there may not be a sense of urgency on some people's part, but, you know, this is, I mean, I've been on council going on eight years. This is like the third time that we've spent a lot of time talking about the unhoused issue. And I know other people have been here long and looking at Pat across the way there. I mean, he has a lot of history too, and I know a lot of other people have put effort into this. But I just kind of feel like, you know, this is one of those things we need to quit processing and just move ahead with. And the bulk of them, you know, I agree with. You know, I respect Susan Van. I don't think, I don't believe people are asking for money. They're asking for staff time to look at policies on moving a tract down that road, and I don't really see that. And that's kind of what my recommendation, my desire would be, is to allow staff to work with community members in a more robust conversation. And I don't know where you're going to get that staff person or the time for that staff person, but, and I guess that is money. But I just kind of feel like that would be, that would be what I'd like to see, out of respect for the work that the community has done on this subject.
George?
Thank you, Mary. Yes, I agree with that. I agree with Councilor Artuas. I think, you know, the three options we were presented with, I kind of like option two that I think needs to be reworked a little bit, and I've done that. I have a motion that I'd like to make. I'm wanting to get this round. I want to hear some of your discussions and then want to change it a little bit, depending on who I hear. But I feel that if we go down route number one, that just diffuses it. I don't know that we need to discuss the policy framework. I think the policy framework is very good, and I don't think it needs to be tweaked or engage in a lot of discussion. So I don't like that option. I don't really like option number three, because if we pursue implementation on any or all of the Eugene Opportunity Eugene Task Force recommendations, then we're diffusing it. I think we really need to hone down to the one crucial element, which was the number one recommendation of the task team is provide safe and secure sites, site for sites. And we need, I feel that the urgency, I mean, it's July. It's going to be winter before we know it. And I feel if we pursue those other two paths, nothing will happen. We'll still be talking about it. And winter will be upon us. It will be at the status quo ante of two years ago. I mean, at least last year, as messy as the camp in Camp McGod, you know, Washington-Jefferson Bridge, people had a safe, most people had a safe place to stay most of the time. There was some disorder, but it was safe most of the time. Every time I visited, it was perfectly ordered. So I feel that if we keep processing it, we're going to process it to death and nothing will happen, and there'll be lots of people, and they will not have, out in the elements, and we'll be back to where we were, and they won't have a safe, secure place to be. So I feel option number two, really, you know, it's time to get working on it and time to move towards action. And I really think that we've had enough policy discussion. I'd like another round.
Daddy?
I agree with George. Of the three options, option two is the one we should take, but there is more urgency than is indicated in that. I also think we should, if we need another work session, it should happen next week instead of after the break, because I think we need to, as George said, winter will be here. It's hard to believe right now, but we don't have a lot of time to decide what to do. And the group who've been working on the opportunity village have planned for us the assets of money, just the use of the land, which is not currently being used. I think there must be a way to facilitate doing it quickly.
Mike?
Yeah, excuse me. Yeah, there was a lot of discussion with everything that occurred in the last winter, all of the occupied issues that came before from council, for discussion around the idea of whether it was a good idea or a bad idea to have everybody aggregated in one place at a camp. And I mean, we talked about a lot of it, a lot of kind of anecdotal stories about people saying it was a good idea, it's a bad idea, it's been done in the past, and this sorts of events. And before we get to a point where we're going down that road, I'd like us to have a discussion at this table about more of the specifics of the pros and cons of the idea of establishing that one location, which will, before I can make that decision. I know that the subcommittees had that, or the groups that have been involved have done so, but we haven't at this table.
Alan?
I like the policy framework. I think it was well done and crafted. And I agree with the task force recommendations as far as they go, and we should think, we should be moving towards implementation of them. So I like option one, to evaluate the recommendations in the context of the policy framework, but I don't think that goes far enough at this point. With regard to option two, which is to direct the city manager to solicit options to implement recommendation number one, which is a safe and secure site, I think that that is where we should be heading, although I understand the timeline is probably not as fast as some people would like it to be. So I know that's more like months, and actually not very likely to have something in place by winter, given the necessary rules that we have to jump through in order to get there. For instance, the conditional use permit for the site that was, has been promoted and the likely things. Conditional use permits are good and bad. They make you do things you don't necessarily want to do, like the university had to comply with the conditional use permit obligations around the new arena, which was very helpful to our, to our neighborhood protection and slowed down that process, and that was a good thing. It also protects people from having things done to nearby properties or areas that, in a quick fashion, that they don't necessarily like. So it allows the community time to kind of work its way through that process, through that legal framework. And I think that the conditional use permit process in particular is one that slows things down on purpose, and I don't have a problem with that. And we want to comply with that. I don't think we throw that out the window because this particular, particular project. So I think we should move forward with that, but I think, as Mike said, we have some precursor city council decisions that we haven't made that we need to have a conversation about. For instance, do we agree with recommendation number one? We haven't said yes. We've accepted the report. We haven't had that conversation. I think I do. And if we do, how will we do it and where would we do it? And those are kind of the precursor questions that I think we need to answer before we can send the city manager off to go implement that one. We have to first say, yeah, we want you to implement that, and then how and where. And I'll address that in a second.
Okay. Chris?
Thanks. Alan actually, I think, picked up a lot of the themes that I was thinking. I think that all of the recommendations from the task force were valuable. I know there was a lot of emphasis on the one about a safe place, because that's the one that seemed to have the most relevance for right now. And I don't want to lose track of that one, because I also agree the issue of homelessness is not going to go away. It's here, and it's actually more substantial right now. The notion of a safe and secure place is a reasonable one. I don't think the issue is whether or not there's a safe and reasonable place. I think the issue is where it can be, when it can be set up, and how this can be done in a thoughtful, careful, deliberate way. That's the angle that I want to pursue. And if we, if we need to visit on the topic a little bit longer in order to do it in that kind of thoughtful way, I'm willing to commit the energy to do it. I think the most important point to telegraph is, I don't want to stall it, I don't want to delay it, I don't want to pretend that I'm supporting it when I'm really not. But at the same time, I also don't want to take an action that I'm going to have to take back later because it wasn't thoughtful, it wasn't done the right way. I'd rather do it right the first time than do something fast and then regret it. I'm balancing the needs of an entire community, of many different communities together, and that's not an easy thing to do. So I think the recommendation number one has, has the bulk of what I would like to do, but as other folks have said, it needs to be added too. We need to also recognize some additional elements to it. So I think, I think we're moving in the right direction. We may not be moving as fast as some people think we should, but I don't want to say we're, we're not going to move, or we're going to use the process to kill creativity. We're going to use the process, I think, to try to make it better, but I don't want it to become part of the obstacle. I want it to be a way we can craft a workable solution.
Pat?
Thank you, Mary. Well said, Councilor Frye. That really hit a lot of the points directly on the head. You know, when we first started work, when I personally first started working on this, back in the late 1990s, the Committee on Homelessness and Youth, what we found out was something that we expected, but we didn't know the depth of it, a very complex issue. And I would do it very simple, to just make a decision to dedicate the land to provide what is necessary, what is needed, a safe place for people to be. But clearly, it's not as simple as I would like it to be, as anyone would like it to be. And while it's easy to say that it's not, it's not going to cost anything other than the land, well, that alone is a great cost. And that it's not going to cost anything other than the land, not taking into account the letter, for instance, from the man who lives one block away from where the proposed, one of the proposed sites is, you know, it becomes a very complex issue. You have people, you have families who are all already in the neighborhood, and as far as cost is concerned, it's not simply a low-cost situation. No matter how we would love it to be and how much it seems like it could be, it isn't. So taking a little bit of time, I think what Chris said about, I don't want to say I support it when I don't, and I don't want to make a decision only to have to step back and say, well, that wasn't the correct decision. So we do need to be very deliberate about it. And while time is passing, time has passed. Since the 1990s, a lot of water has been under the bridge, and things have happened, and things have changed. But we need to be deliberate, because the decisions we make as a council, hopefully and likely will last for a lot of years to come. And so making the wrong decision now is going to be much harder and much more damaging to backtrack on incorrect decisions at this point in time than to move forward with something without fully having the deliberation that an issue of this magnitude of this weight takes.
George Quone?
Well, I think by going by option number two, we're making ourselves so narrow and specific that we're forgetting about all the other recommendations, which are important to the overall issue. We need to look at this as a whole issue, not just one specific topic and focus all of our energy here. I agree with what we had in Chris, you said. And I think also we need to have some discussion about exit strategy also, in the event that one of these things that we take on is not working properly, or we accomplish what we're trying to get done. We need to figure out how to back out of that effort and refocus the effort somewhere else. So I can't, I can't support option two. I'm in favor of option one with maybe some minor modifications that I get to.
I've got in the second round, George Andrea Allen. I just want to make a comment that I do understand people's concern about what's going to happen this coming winter, so I do get that. And that may not be the same answer as what you're talking about here. I don't know if there's going to be a Plan A or a Plan B while we're working on this. My major concern, to tell you the truth, is I think a council does its best work when it does it iteratively, when it kind of moves along and tries to perfect what it's doing, but does it in a timely way. So I think there is a pressure to really move, but I also think it's important to be, to take the time to try to bring people. More than around this table, I guess I'm concerned about the broader community. And what I was trying to say at the beginning is I think whatever position you have in the community on the issue of homeless folks, it's in your interest, up here in the community, to do something about it, because if you're doing nothing, it's costing us a great deal. It's costing us in terms of livability, it's costing us public safety dollars, it's costing us health dollars, it's costing us a whole lot of things too, that are really expensive, no matter where you are and where you come from in the community, not to speak of people's safety and well-being. So I think there's a good reason for everybody in this community to want to find a way to improve services and find safe places for people to be. I think, no matter what your persuasion is, I think that's a good goal. What that means to each of us is something a little different, probably, but I think we should be trying to find a place that we can move forward as a community together. What I don't want to have happen is people get pressed to the end game and break up into sides, and then we're all about arguing over what the particular location looks like before you've even decided if you want to do something. So I am, I think it would be an enormous step if you would just, as a council, decide whether you want to pursue the safe and secure place for people. We haven't gotten that far, and I just think just making that decision alone lets you take that first step down the road to using the framework and deciding what that means to us as a council and as a city. You can't even get in that first loop until you make the decision as a body whether you really want to pursue bettering the situation for homeless people in this community, because it will help everyone in our community, and whether you're willing to try to look hard for a safe and secure place for people to be, whether that, if that's done this winter, I don't know. That's a whole other discussion about what we do in the meantime. So I just put that out there and ask you to, I think you're perfectly capable today of having a discussion about first whether you want to do that or not. Okay. George?
Thank you, Mary. I've got a couple of questions for Mike. I understand you had some discussions with Portland Housing, very, and did you speak to anyone in Seattle, about their tent cities up there?
No, I only spoke with Sadie and Erickson, her staff.
Okay. Best book for people. Well, I would just like to make a couple of comments. About a month ago, I visited all of the tent cities, the many in Portland, and three in Seattle. I found them to be very well organized, very well run. They were totally safe, they were totally orderly. totally orderly, they had very good security arrangements. One, the one in Portland is a little loose on the drug, alcohol use, but they don't have, they allow people to, you know, have a beer or something. The serious alcoholic disorder, the people are expulsed from camp, it's not allowed. It's very strict at the three in Seattle, the two tent cities and one called Nettlesville. They have very strict agreements, people that live there. If you violate drug and alcohol policy, if you don't contribute to the security of the camp, if you don't help keep the camp neat and tidy, you have to leave. I may enforce that. Police are almost never called to any of the camps. Only very rarely does it happen when someone's been kicked out, you know, or leave, so 911, they get their removed. Two of the, one in Portland and one in Seattle are in, I would say, very marginal areas, kind of like industrial sites, one's by the Duamish River, kind of near West Seattle, that's Nettlesville. Dignity Village is out by the airport. The other two, the two, Tent City Three and Tent City Four are in residential neighborhoods. So, one is in Seattle, up on Capitol Hill, on East Tenth. Broadway turns into East Tenth. I don't know if you know that neighborhood. It's one of the tiniest areas of Seattle, the highest property values, the nicest homes and apartments. It's in the parking lot of St. Mark's Episcopal Cathedral. The other one is in Woodinville, it's more rural, but still, it's in a Lutheran church apartment. They rotate every three months, so they don't wear out their welcome in any one neighborhood. The one in Woodinville was in Kenmore, or, no, Kirkland, and they were very fancy condominiums, right, right up, they were built right up to the, there again, it was, it was a pretty, you know, high economic, that's my neighborhood.
Another round, George?
Yes.
Andrew.
Well, I guess what's missing, I don't mean any disrespect to my peers around the table, but what I think what's missing from the conversation is political will. I think that we've talked about this ad nauseam. This happened in January, and here it is July, and it's come back to us, recommendations. And I don't know, I'm not going to support one, no matter what. I might support two. If George has a third that he's gonna, he's thinking about, I'd be willing to think about supporting that. I just feel like, you know, all this can talk about won't happen unless we allow staff to work with the community to look on the policies that needs to come back to you. And I can count noses on the table, I can see which way it's going. So, what I'd like to see is that, that, you know, we give direction to the city manager to allow staff to work with the community to look at policies, the policy issues around these, so that they come back as part of the recommendations to the conversation further. I think that is really important. I, I, I think that, I'm just kind of amazed, I guess, at this conversation that we're having around not moving forward on some of the recommendations. When it first came to me, I was ready to support them, and, you know, they said, oh, no, we need to talk about it further. So, here we are again, and we're going to talk about it further. Okay, that's fine. That's, that's the way we want to go, but I'm not going to support the manager's recommendation.
Alan.
So, back on the timeline for a second. So, if we said, yes, today we want to do a camp and it's on this site, how long would that take?
Four to six months. If you had, that's what our best estimate is, is if you had a site today that you wanted to do, that went through the CUP process, we also think it would require the public process with neighborhoods and those kinds of things, four to six months.
And then, so we're not even there yet, so if we had to add a kind of period of time to work through getting to yes and how and where, that's another two, a couple of months.
Yes, and it depends on how quickly the council would want to move forward on that.
So, I agree with what Andy said. I'm a little frustrated with this. I've been working on this issue for over 20 years too. Back in the 80s and 90s, I was chair of the Human Services Commission, started the Safe and Sound Project, I'm working on homeless youth issues and all that stuff for a long, long time. And, and, and we have a lot of good services in, in this area, and we do great work, and I've seen what we've done, and, and we provide a darn good, do a darn good job of it, but it isn't enough. And we, and we, or anybody for that matter, has to solve the homelessness issue. So, I think we should first say that we agree with recommendation number one. And then, of course, saying yes to that kind of depends on the details about, so what does that mean? So, and, and how do we do it and where do we do it? The task force reviewed the locations, we really haven't. Multiple versus single sites, I kind of would like to see smaller single and multiple sites. What's the city liability? What does it cost? Do we do this as a pilot? You know, if we solicit proposals, we can unleash the creativity to get people ideas about how to do this. We've already got two very creative proposals, I think, so it's partially, mostly done on that. So, I'd like to see us put a, and I would put out a motion that we agree with recommendation number one to provide a safe and secure site, and then kind of combine option one and option two together so that staff goes off and analyzes all of the recommendations in the context of the policy framework and starts the implementation of recommendation number one. So, we don't lose the two months that we have while we're on break. And I think if we can start that process and move forward and come back in the fall with good staff work done and moving this ball forward with the policy framework and recommendation number one, how, what our view would look like for solicitations for proposals, and then I think we can, I think that would be a good, good place for us to be at the end of today and allow staff to go do the work that they need to do over the break.
I've got Barry Mays and Pat in the second round.
Thank you. I think there could be, well, I want to respond to what was said about the land. We would, would not be giving the land away. We're allowing the land to be used, which is not currently being used. So, it is temporary, it is a pilot program, and it is, the plans that have been already made really don't need a lot of staff work. All we need to do is get permission and for land that's not being used. It's the kind of thing that's done many places, it could sometimes go to community gardens. But I think that it is urgent that we do something, we wouldn't be solving the whole problem, we would be having a pilot program, solving a problem for a few people, and, and using the work that people have done really carefully and thoroughly to start something soon. And if we do, if we can make a decision before we go on break, even if with your four to six months, four months with the November, which is a lot better than January. So, I think that we should make a decision today, or if we need more time, we'd again, we have a meeting next week on Wednesday, Monday. Have another work session if we need it. This is more important than the process session that's scheduled. Thank you.
Mike and then Pat and Chris.
Thank you, Mayor. In this discussion, I'm trying to remain open-minded to the task force recommendations. I'm trying to, want to participate in the discussion. But I would have to agree with the mayor that I'd like to do this in a manner of fashion. I'm not prepared today to vote on whether or not we want to agree with that suggestion. And the reason is because I'm in need of having a full discussion at this table about whether or not that's a good idea or a bad idea. What are the city's liabilities? What comes of the, of doing so? And I'm just not there yet. And so, I think we have experience in the past that shows us that that may be an unwise idea. So, I want us to talk about the conditions under which we would be interested in doing so before we make a snap decision to do it. So, if the motion that comes out on the table is to approve and move forward today, I'll have to vote no on that because I'm not ready to make that decision. But I am willing to continue having the discussion and to look at what options we might create that satisfy folks. Now, part of what I'm saying here is, we're talking about policy frameworks that affect the whole city. We're talking about policy frameworks that represent everyone in the community. And oftentimes, and I, again, I don't either mean any disrespect to anyone who's worked very, very hard on this. A lot of the times, the people who become involved in the discussion around creating policy are those very closely affected. But the policy then doesn't always have the ability to represent the views and the values of the entire community in that process. And so, I want us to have a fuller conversation rather than just accept the, on face value, the recommendations of interested parties who've done a lot of hard work to put good recommendations forward.
Before I call on Pat, I just want to make one comment that if you as a body should choose to move forward, the idea of safe and secure site or sites, that does not say what site, that does not say what the capacity would be, or any of the other details that would need to be fleshed out. It would say that your goal as a council is to, to secure some, some safe and secure sites for, for people who need, who need them. So, that is what you, you would be agreeing to if you chose to do it that way.
All right, Pat.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, Mayor, I think one thing that you said is very important regarding transitioning people, the policy framework item one, transitioning people out of homelessness. We've been trying to do that for a long time. We've bitten the political bullet at least once in the past when we put the utility types on the, on the ballot to dedicate a stream of funding toward transitioning people out of homelessness. But that, the mayor also said that while we transition people, we, we cannot lose track of the type of people who need shelter, immediate emergency shelter on an ongoing basis, whether it's an overnight shelter or something to house their children for, for longer periods of time. So, we can't lose, lose track of that, that, that particular point. Once again, it's, it's not an easy issue, and I'm intrigued by Councilor Zelenka's suggestion that somehow we could combine one and two by acknowledging that we do need more discussion in the form of a work session after we come back from break, but potentially allowing the manager to begin to identify what sites may be available. So, that, so a question regarding that to the city manager, how much work has been done on identifying sites that potentially could be available? We do have one that's sort of risen to the top as far as people's perception is concerned. Has any work been done at this point, Mayor?
There's been cursory work, related to talking with parks and also just looking at what vacant lands, either in public or private ownership around the community, but there hasn't been a focused effort of March on any specific sites. On each site that we look at has its own set of complications, and it's a matter of trade-offs that we have to discuss down the road on some of the direction to do so.
I think because of the fact that there are a lot more people, there's an entire community involved with this decision, and not only the people affected directly, virtually everybody in the community is affected at some level by whatever decision we make surrounding this. So, I think, you know, it's not likely that we're, that we're going to say, start work on a particular site today. That's not going to happen. But if there was some way that we could combine a motion acknowledging that we do need to have a work session after the council break, but in the meantime, ask the manager and staff to get a little bit more of a focused pinpoint idea of what sites may be available, and a short bullet point of what are the obstacles to each particular site, so that when we do come back and for our, for our discussing, discussion on the framework, understanding we've not finalized the framework yet, at least we have some idea as to what the site may be. So, that, that would be kind of the direction I would lean right now, is to acknowledge that we do need a discussion on the framework policy after we get back from break, but some work could be done in the meantime as far as giving us a little bit more meat for, more grounds for discussion. Now, that being said, there, that's not the only recommendation that came out of the task force. There were other recommendations, and we've not had a chance to discuss any of those yet. But on the other recommendations, Mike, we have made some headway. Can you talk about that episode briefly?
Oh, yeah.
Keep it under 30 minutes.
Creating support day use in community centers. We did, Council did work funding to St. Vincent Falls Department Service Station for expansion and addition of a commercial kitchen. The same amount, just over $189,000 was given to Whiteford. We have a new building being acquired for addition council services. So, that would fall under improved traditional, non-traditional healthcare access. Those are the two biggest steps that were made to kind of link up with recommendations since, as far as both councils done. As I mentioned earlier, there's a few updates surrounding creating a commission and some interest from outside agencies in the improved laws and licenses that criminalize a block of the city.
So, some work has been there. Bathroom access?
Yeah, we continue to work on that. A lot of this was just, I think, from the task force, getting people together to talk about it and see some of the fruits of that way for people. Of course, we need to, that was on our own. So, we see the partnerships with UG Mission, Whiteford, come on to this.
I don't believe we've been fully stalled on this, although the councils have suggested. We have made some headway, and the fact that we're talking about the permanent site.
Another round, Pat?
Yes, thank you. Because we are moving in the right direction, or in a direction.
Chris.
Thank you. I appreciate the conversation, and one of the things I think we're trying to accomplish is to be able to tell the community and the staff something clear and something that has some direction to it. And I think recommendation number one is clear and provides direction in as far as it goes, but like some others here, it would be great if we could provide additional clarity and some additional direction above that. Rather than trying to cobble something together that is kind of like trying to eat the sandwich in one bite, we choke on it, is let's maybe break this up into pieces. And I think what we could do is say, we could go ahead and approve one, because I think one does provide some, it moves the ball down the court, maybe not completely, but it does keep moving. And then in addition to that, I think perhaps we could have a motion that speaks directly to what is kind of the core issue. Are we willing as a council to explore the creation of a safe and secure place? Not how many it is or where it is, but are we willing to be clear that we're, that we want to do this work? We want to look and see if such a thing is possible to do. I would be willing to support a motion, however it was crafted, that said to direct the city manager and the staff during our break to explore the possibility of a site specific to establish a safe and secure place, so that we don't waste our time during break. We send a clear message that we're in, that we want to do this. I don't have an expectation that we're going to have a site up and ready by October 1st, but part of this could also be exploring what's the alternative. Winter's cold, and we need to know what we're going to do while we work on this. But let's not try to put something together that we're going to choke on, let's maybe have a couple of motions that provide that level of clarity, both to staff and to the community, that we want to do this. This isn't, this is an issue that we're interested in. So, I could support one, and perhaps we have an additional motion that says, let's, with all deliberate speed, start working on finding a safe and secure place in the community where we can create options for homeless folks, transitional options. And I don't have the exact wordage in mind, but at least it keeps us moving forward and it sends a signal that we want to keep moving forward.
We'll have some motions coming up here. So, George, your next.
Thanks, Mayor. I, I don't know, I still don't like option number one because I think it confuses everything. I think it gets us away from direct action, and it lessens a sense of urgency. And I, it's just, okay, go, you know, work on the policy framework and then evaluate all the recommendations? I mean, that's going to take billions of hours to do. I am, so I think I'll just go ahead and make my motion, and then I'd like to speak to it if I get a second. My motion is to direct the city manager to pursue implementation without an additional policy framework. Recommendation number one, safe and secure site or sites of the task force, UG task force, with a view to having the site or sites ready for occupancy on October 1st, 2012.
Second.
Thank you, I'll speak to that. That date obviously is aspirational. It may not be possible to do, yes, have a site. It may not be possible to do, yes, have a site ready by that time. But we need a target. We need a moving, we need a stationary target to shoot for. And so, that's why I did that. Where I'd like to emphasize, we're not making a final decision today. All we're doing today is directing staff to move this forward expeditionally because there is a sense of urgency here that's somewhat lacking in terms of recommendations in mind. So, you know, staff needs to identify legal issues. I agree with Councilor Farr and someone else mentioned it too, to have a list of all the city-owned properties where transition camp might be established. There are some sites that would be, you know, not suitable. Share all the information in a timely fashion with opportunity village people so that they can keep refining their proposal. You know, that's, and you know, the one site that's sending the most discussion right now is 13th and Chalmers. And Opportunity Village people have been engaging the neighborhood very, very heavily. I'll need another round too. So, and you know, and they'll continue to do that. We'll be on break, but they won't be. Every day and in the evening, they will be talking to people in the neighborhood, explaining what they have in mind, which I'll go over briefly in my next round, the way I understand the proposal anyway. So, they'll still be working and then they, they will present their recorded proposal in September. And I've got a list of all the open work session dates.
So, it's getting to be five to one. I'm just taking that as a cautionary thing, so you want to think about how we get through this and actually get through this. So, I've got Anne, Reed, Alan, Pat and Mike in the queue this round.
Got a motion?
I want to chat with Kathy today. Well, I just want to say a couple of things. I support George's motion, but I just want to make a comment that everybody at this table is concerned about homelessness and people who are unhoused. There's not, I've not heard any comments that have, that would say that anybody is not in support of doing something to help them. I know everybody at this table has voted to support multiple things around human services. I just want to acknowledge that. And I also want to say that I think, I know people are uncomfortable about moving expeditiously and I get it. You know, when we were, when I first got on council, the first big undertaking I took was the civilian review board and the police auditor. And that was a culture change and it was a very huge culture change. And this is a culture change, people. This isn't the norm. You know, but it's, times are different and we need to look at doing different things to address the changing demographics that we have. And to do nothing is not an option. And I'm not hearing anybody say not do nothing, but you know, I just kind of feel like I just wanted to say this is a culture change. It's a shift in how we've looked at it. But other cities have somehow figured out to allow this to happen in their communities. And so, what I'm saying is I want staff to be able to work on, looking at it and to work with the community so that they understand the barriers. I mean, if there are policies that we need to change, that is what needs to be brought to our attention. I'll say it again, it's not a sin to be homeless and it shouldn't be against the law.
Thank you, Alan.
So, I agree with what a lot of people have said so far. There are six recommendations that came out of the task force and I don't think just moving one forward is sufficient for me. So, I'll throw out a friendly amendment and if not, I'll make it as a substitute motion. But I would move that the council agrees with Opportunity Eugene Task Force recommendation number one and to direct the city manager to schedule a work session to, A, finalize the policy framework and B, evaluate recommendations of the Opportunity Eugene Task Force based on this framework and direct the city manager to explore, investigate and develop a process to implement recommendation number one, safe and secure site of the task force and evaluate them consistent with the policy framework as advised by the, revised by the council. Or, no, just with policy framework and bring this work to a work session after the summer break. Yeah, I'll move to substitute.
Is there a second?
So, kind of wraps it together. So, what it did is-
I'll second.
It said-
Okay, Chris is second.
So, it says, we agree with the recommendation number one and it also says, let's do number, option number one, the city manager said, and option number two, which is bring back implementation for recommendation number one, implementation plan. So, it kind of combines all three of those things together.
Okay, so we're now looking at Alan's motion, substitute motion. And I got Pat and Mike in the queue, want to give them a chance to speak before we take a vote.
Thank you. I, you know, I, once again, I like the concept, Alan, of the motion. The only thing that I'm troubled by is that there's a possibility, whether or not we care to admit it, that it's just not possible. Whereas the motion doesn't allow for the possibility that we cannot do this. Now, there, we've not seen all of the eventuality, we've not seen all the conditions and obstacles that are going to be thrown up by the 165, 170,000 people living in this community. That, things that we may not have even recognized, that things that we may not have even heard from since, it's, once again, a relatively small group of people who've given us a vast preponderance of testimony on this. So, that's the problem I have with the motion is that it doesn't recognize the fact that we may get all the information laid out on the table, it's just not possible to do it.
Well, it does say bring it back to, bring it back to council for a work session, which implies approval.
It implies approval. Could you just give me the first words of the motion then? Or is it implement, I think?
To, you mean the third, the second, for option two. Direct the city manager, explore, investigate and develop a process to implement recommendation number one of the task force, evaluate them consistent with the policy framework and bring this back for a work session after the summer break.
Process to implement.
Now- That means, are you going to do solicitation? Are you going to, are you going to hire somebody to do it?
Then, there's another part that you said, the council agrees with recommendation number one. And I think we're going to have some difficulty with that. Stating just boldly that we agree with recommendation number one, that it will happen. Because it, once again, we can't say around the staple right now that it will happen. As much as we'd like to, we can't say that it will happen. So, that portion that we agree with it, I guess we agree with it in concept, understanding that conditions may exist that will succeed in happening.
Isn't number one, is identifying, establish potential sites, secure sites, is that what it is?
Yeah.
So, it is identify, establish potential, potential, secure sites.
The motion doesn't include the council?
That is, that is number one, that's what it is.
Yeah, the one that's in the slides, the direct city staff all along. That's not what I had in mind. The motion one, or score one, recommendation one is what's on the AIS.
Oh, I see.
Can you read the motion on the actual site? Read the actual motion that you're proposing, Alan. I'm sorry, that Chris is seconding it.
Council agrees with Opportunity Eugene Task Force recommendation number one and then direct the city manager basically do his option number one and direct the city manager to explore, investigate and develop a process to implement recommendation number one of the task force, evaluate it consistent with the framework and bring this back to a work session, council work session after the summer break.
Okay, Mike, you're up.
Yeah, I was willing to vote with Chris on what he put forward and the fundamental difference for me is kind of what Pat's getting at here, is the idea that we're agreeing that we have to do this or that we want to do this or that we have all decided it's a good idea to accept recommendation number one. I'm not there yet and I'm hopeful that there, and as Pat has identified, there may be reasons why that's problematic at least or impossible in some cases. I want us to have a fuller conversation. The way Chris put it forward was to exclude that particular point you made at the very beginning of your motion and with that change, I would be willing to support it. I'd even be willing to ask you if you'd like to suggest or if you'd like to accept it friendly, that we accept the recommendation rather than the word that you just said.
Shouldn't we do that?
No.
Shouldn't we accept the report?
Oh, we did accept it, we didn't adopt it.
We accepted it already. I was willing to separate out the motions.
I think we're fairly unanimous as a council. I think we're fairly unanimous as a council that if we're, if we're willing to do that little, one more step of evaluation, that I think we're unanimous to move forward. I think we're five-three otherwise and it'll happen, but it'll be unfortunate.
Yeah, I, well, this has been percolating for a long, long time, so, you know, another work session might get us there, I'm not sure we will or not. And we're running out of time.
Let's just think about this for a minute. I believe even when Chris said, he was saying number one on AIS, right, Chris?
That's first part.
And then number two was a commitment to-
Explore sites.
Explore sites and, so I don't think, I mean, I think there's a place of-
Well, we're going to disagree.
Well, not maybe, but we just chunk it out.
It might be easier.
Yeah. We're going to separate it into three motions.
I'll do that as I'm still on a clock here. I'll be willing to say then it's a substitute motion first, the manager's number one, just to take this to the first step.
You got a motion on the, on the table?
We already have a substitute motion.
Shouldn't we substitute the substitute?
No, you can't.
That gives us the confusing, that's unfortunate. Unless he decides to withdraw. In which case, I'll make those steps.
And do what?
Go back to George, vote on that one and then we can do whatever we want to.
Well, what you're suggesting is you do option number, or the city manager, option number one is the first vote.
Correct.
And then the second vote is whether to agree with recommendation number one?
The wording was, was Chris to explore and come back with options and evaluating in a work session for the sites. There's a fundamental difference, which is that we accept that we have to do this.
Oh, well, yeah, I'm not willing to let that part out.
What's we do in a separate motion?
Yeah, so we could do it in separate motion, so.
Recommendation number one, by the way, is create and support day use communities in place.
Which is a different thing.
All right, so Alan is-
That's number two.
Is yours standing? It depends on what list you're looking at.
Oh, that's options number one.
No.
No, the first page of the AIS has the recommendation.
We're using opportunity recommendations from city manager recommendation.
So, I just want to get us back on course here and say, Alan, are you keeping your motion on the table or you?
Yes, but they're separating them. But just to clarify-
You have to draw first.
I would just withdraw, let's go clean.
You're going to withdraw it?
And then?
We vote on George and then after that, then we come back and work this out.
Actually, as I saw before, I'll make a different substitute motion if he withdraws it.
What do you want, Alan?
Sure, if we can move forward by separating it out, I'll draw my motion.
I'll move then to, I'll move manager's recommendation number one.
It's a substitute?
It's a substitute for step one, yes. I'll second that to keep.
All right. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor? One, two, three, four, five in opposition. One, two, three, it passes. Okay, next motion.
I would like to use the words that Chris-
All you've done so far is substitute.
You now need to vote on that.
Okay.
It's now the main motion.
Okay, now we're going to go to the main motion. All in favor of the main motion? One, two, three, four, five in opposition. One, two, three, okay, it passes.
And the next motion will be, I would like to let Chris make the wording note because he hadn't captured it better than I could.
I hate making motions on the fly, but-
Please do not.
The motion that I would make is that we direct the city manager to actively explore options for a safe and secure site and bring them, safe and secure site or sites that can be used and during the break and bring those back for the council to consider right after, as soon after the break is reasonable. I don't want to set a timeline on it. We want to act diligently though.
I'm going to work, meant to clarify to make sure we really understand what people are saying. That's a little bit different than your second motion. So, I'm going to say my second motion, you like it. So, it's direct city manager to explore and investigate and develop a process for implementation of recommendation number one, evaluate against the framework and bring it back for a work session after the break.
The principal difference in what I said and what you want is you, you're wanting them to come back with a process and I'm saying, I'm asking you actively explore sites.
Well, yeah, but, yeah, so, yeah, there's an additional, so, once we have the sites, how are we going to do it? Are we going to do it by solicitation of proposals or, so what's the framework we would make, implement this? How would we move it forward? And I think that's something that should be done in break as well. That's not committing anything, it's just having staff explore what are the options to bring back to council about how would we move this?
I'll look at the process too.
Okay, all right, I'll accept that as a-
So, do we have a motion?
Yeah, that's the motion using that one.
Okay. And you seconded it? Or you seconded it?
It's technically my motion with his words, so who can?
He asked, you made the motion using my words modified by Alan.
Yes.
So, it's still his motion, I'll second his motion.
All right, all right.
Using my words and his modification.
All right.
It's very collaborative.
Okay, yes, yes.
I'm going to want to spread back eventually.
Yeah, I, this is kind of what I was afraid would happen is it's getting so diluted now that we're going to end up with something really meaningless that will guarantee that nothing will be ready by when severe weather starts. And, you know, last, last winter, when the camp was broken up, the Washington Jefferson Camp was broken up, people were promised there would be even warming centers all winter long, there would be funds for it. It didn't happen, ten minutes, something like that. So, I see us headed down the same path. And I will tell you that the disappointment in the community will be tremendous, tremendous of the Gump Lake substantial, real, on-the-ground progress. And I see us headed down that path where we're asking the staff's going to get so diluted away from, from the main thing, which is safe and secure sites, one or two. And there are ways to make it happen. There are ways to make it happen by activity, Chris. You know, there was a way to make the encampment at Washington Jefferson, the park happen and we granted an exemption to camping ordinance, which prohibited gatherings like that. So, we need the council, we granted an exemption, we can do that now. We can do that now and staff can still continue to work on the conditional use permit and all the other legal frameworks necessary to codify an encampment. The proposal is not forever and ever. It is, it is strictly temporary, three to five years until that's, that's the 13th Street side anyway, is developed, that side is a, you know, affordable housing side. And that's the highest of best views. And I think everybody at Opportunity Village agrees with that and understands that if an encampment was set up here, it would strictly be temporary, three to five years. And the idea is to start small with 30 people. Not just any 30 people, but parents with children who are homeless. There's over 400 kids in 4J that are homeless. Some of them are already attending, say, their children. Well, now they would have a place to stay right across the street. The idea is the test program, test it out, see how it works. I feel that it would work beautifully. And then expand it if it demonstrates competence, safety, and if people actually do transition out, that this proposal, it doesn't step on the toes of shelter care or state venues. It doesn't require funding, a huge amount of funding from the city. This is the population that is most interested in using transitional and actually transiting out of an encampment like that. Not people like, I've heard in Opportunity Village, people are trying to regard that as their permanent home. This would not be that way.
What I'm trying to avoid is the all or nothing divides us kind of, and I realize that the go big or don't go at all is a very attractive option. It's the, you know, fish or cut bait. Hey, we need to do it right now. And there's a, there's a real efficiency to that. It's a very easy thing to do. Do it or don't. The problem is, when you fish or cut bait, some people are going to fish and some people are going to cut bait and that's going to divide us. I'm looking for a solution where we can all go together. It's going to be ugly. I think the conversation we had at this table has been absolutely incredible. It's been unbelievably messy and yucky and ugly to watch and it's exactly the way we have to debate these issues. I'm still trying to make, make a kind of solution where the majority of us can go, okay, it's not going as far as I'd like it to go, it's not going exactly the direction I'd like it to go, but at least it's collectively moving in that direction. And if we, if we try to say, it's this or nothing, you're going to lose folks. And I don't want to lose folks. I want to bring folks to the degree we can. And I know that's not an ideal solution for folks who like to get to the end right away. I still want to get to the end, but I want to bring as many people along with me as I can. And to me, what, what we've got going right now is not, it's not ideal. I'll admit that right up front. It's not ideal, but at least it's bringing- that right up front. It's not ideal, but at least it's bringing as many people along as possible. If we try to force a solution that drops people along the way, will we really be better off when we're done than if we at least bring folks along with us?
Alan, I just want to make a comment that I, that I believe, no matter where you are around this table, the people you're really trying to figure out how to do the best for are the people who are unhoused in the community, and to do it in a way that will be acceptable to most of the community, or get support from most of the community, and to try to do that, and the best chance we have of doing that is if we can find something that we all get behind together here, and, and commit to, I realize there are still some of us who are not totally committed to the notion of a secure and safe site, but at least we're all to the point that we're willing to pursue it. And I think that's really good. And I think the, the thing that Councilor Brown brings up is something that we all have to take seriously. This has to be moved along at a, at a quick, a quick pace, so that people have confidence that we're taking it seriously and, and moving it forward. So I, my, my hope is that you will, that we're going to be conveying a message out of here. I'm hoping the message that we're conveying is we're looking for solutions to improve a lot for homeless folks, unhoused folks in our community, and we're willing to explore a secure, safe and secure site, and we're telling our, our staff to go look and, and help us try to find that place. We have not gotten to the point of a location. We have not gotten to the point of what that would look like. Those are all things out in the future. Alan?
So, George, I actually, except for the date, I think we're saying exactly the same thing. And your motion said direct city manager, pursue implementation of recommendation number one. The motion that I put forward is to have the city manager explore, investigate, and develop a process to implement recommendation number one. I think those are semantically different, but the intent is exactly the same. And to move these forward as soon as we can. I don't, I just don't think October 1st is actually realistic to have all this happen in, in a timeframe. You know, we've been working on this for 30, 40 years, and we're not going to solve it in the next little while. I know people are impatient about that, but we need to get it right. So I don't think what you're saying, or what this motion's saying, are any different at all. So if they are, maybe you can say how they're different. Because explore, investigate, develop a process to implement sure seems like the same thing as pursue implementation.
May I respond to that?
Right.
Are you asking for a response?
Yes.
Well, anytime I say, you know, develop a process, I think, okay, that's two months right there. Develop a process, that's two months. And now we're, the company, October 1st, and we're still talking. We're developing the process. We're trying to fit it into the policy framework. We're not, we haven't showed people potential sites. We haven't started this conditional use permit process. It's just all, it's more a process, and nothing will happen. And I think the community reaction, if we get into that spot, and I hate to say it, but it is seeming to be headed towards that place, the disappointment in the community will be unbelievable. I don't know what some of the reactions will be. I've invented various scenarios. I can make various predictions. I, I think that guaranteeing that an inferior product or something with the hands of staff.
Cap.
Thank you. I, you know, I think we've talked about what people would like with development, what we all want to see, and what people do need. We do have a large community, a lot of people, and one of the most important things about this and any endeavor that we undertake is that we need to make sure it's safe. There are vast numbers of people in this community who aren't convinced that this sort of encampment could be a safe place. Now, whether or not you agree with that, the people who think that, that is a fact. A lot of people don't think it's a safe place. What the, the motion is allowed for is for us to demonstrate that it's potentially, that it is going to be a safe place. It's going to be a safe place for my kids to walk by. It's going to be a safe, safe for anybody's kids to live by. And it's going to be a safe place in general for the people who choose to occupy the space, who choose to live there. So safety is of paramount importance to anybody who's looking at this from any angle. And I'm afraid that by stepping forward and saying, do this now by October 1st, we can't guarantee to everybody that it's going to be a safe place. So I believe that supporting the motion allows us to take steps in that direction, and, and allows the manager to come back and say, these are the places, these are the obstacles, this is the safety implication, and this is how, why it cannot or can be in this particular question. One clarification that I will make is that, I believe it was Alan or George stated that they agreed with me, saying, look at all the available city-owned sites. I didn't say city-owned sites. I said available sites. It doesn't necessarily have to be a city-owned site as we move forward with this.
Alan, your next.
So one of the things I get out of what you've written here, George, you're, you're saying, direct the city manager, pursue implementation. That means direct, so this is the city manager-